Good evening, we'll start by calling the September 2nd Planning Board meeting to order. It is now five o'clock. Could I get somebody from Planning Board for approval of the agenda? Moved by Councillor Adams, seconded by Councillor Trenholm, all those in favor? Moved. We'll move into land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land upon which we gather is unceding Mi'kmaq territory. Everywhere is covered by the historic treaties of peace and friendship. We pay respects to indigenous Mi'kmaq people who have occupied this island for over 12,000 years, past, present, and future. Land acknowledgement is a small but meaningful way of showing respect and honoring the indigenous peoples of the land where we live. It is also a way of resisting the erasure of the indigenous histories and an important step on the pathway towards reconciliation. Next, we'll move into any conflict of interest declarations. Not seeing any. We'll put her over to Councillor Ron. And Recommendation 149 Harvard Street.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Snow. Yeah, 149 Harvard Street. Application for a major variance. And that major variance has to do with lot depth. The purpose of the variance is to decrease the lot depth requirement for the proposed lot. Lot 25-2 on the site plan. Background, the city received a subdivision application from Jordan Buchanan to subdivide his property at 149 Harvard Street. PID is 316505. The applicant is requesting a 12% variance to the lot depth of the proposed lot 25-2. The proposed lot depth is 26.404 meters, whereas the City of Summerside zoning bylaw requires a lot depth of 30 meters. To process a major variance more than 10%, subject to council approval, the development officer shall provide written notice to all assessed property owners within a radius of 30 meters or 98.4 feet from the subject lot, describing the variance sought and inviting written comments within seven clear days. The application is reviewed by the Planning Board. The Planning Board makes a recommendation to council and council may approve, deny, or approve a variance less than requested. The report, under Section 7.2 of the zoning bylaw, variance applications shall be considered by council, Planning Board, or the Development Officer as applicable against the following tests for justifying a variance. All applicable criteria must be met. A, that the hardship is due to unique physical conditions of the lot or property, including small lot size, irregular lot shape, existing building location on the property, or exceptional topographical conditions which make it impractical to develop in strict conformity with bylaw standards. Exceptional topographical conditions may include but are not limited to trees, slope of the land, et cetera. And the staff comment for criteria A, this variance request would meet the test. The lot being considered for subdivision is an existing through lot. The lot depth requirement cannot be achieved due to the existing lot size bounded by two streets, Harvard Street and Milton Avenue. B, that the proposed variance meets the general intent of the official plan. Staff comment, yes, this variance request would meet this test. The variance meets the intent of the official plan, including Sections 3.5 and 4.1 that speak to functional growth and development control. C, that the proposed variance meets the general intent of the zone. Staff comment, yes, this variance request would meet this test. The proposed use of the lot is a single detached dwelling which is a permitted use in the R3 zone. And D, that the proposed variance would not impact negatively on adjacent properties or on the essential character of the surrounding neighborhood, including taking into consideration any comments from neighbors. And staff comment, yes, this variance request would meet this test. Thirty letters were mailed to 19 properties within 30 meters of the boundaries of the subject property. Comments from adjacent property owners were due on or before August 25th, 2025. No written comments were received, although there was one that came in since this package went out, and I will, I'll read that here in a moment. The Development Officer was not contacted by anyone in regards to this variance. So just before I read the staff review, I will read that correspondence that came in. And it is from, please hold, Robin Lidstone. And his concerns are that the street isn't wide enough to accommodate more street parking, and that there's a bylaw from the 1920s approximately that required properties to be 100 feet, which was put in place after a big fire. And then the staff response to that inquiry was that the main concern was the 100-foot piece, and it was explained that the bylaw that he's referring to has likely been rescinded and that it's not the current standard anymore, and that there are new regulations and new safety considerations built into the building bylaw. So that, just wanted to make sure that that was read in, and if I missed anything from staff, please let me know. So the staff review, city staff support the application for a, sorry, Councillor Coleman, did you?
No, no.
Oh, sorry, okay. City staff support the application for a 12% variance to the lot depth for lot 25-2. The adjacent property and other neighboring properties have similar lot depths. Depths. As per Section 7.3 of the zoning bylaw, the Planning Board shall make a recommendation to council on this application before it is approved or denied. The Planning Board recommendation, whether carried or defeated, will be brought forward for council for a final decision. The Planning Board recommendation, the application received from Jordan Buchanan to allow lot depth of 26.404 meters, resulting in a 12% variance, be recommended to be approved by council, and that recommendation moved by myself, and I would ask for a seconder from Planning Board, Councillor Adams. Are there any questions or comments? And I believe this goes to our meeting later this evening.
Did we receive something on this?
Just read a little bit?
Yes, yeah, that was the, yeah. So hearing no further questions or comments, all members of Planning Board in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, and I just will remind everyone that Mayor Koacher, who is absent tonight, is also a member of the Planning Board, so that's why the vote is three this evening instead of four. Okay. Next item, recommendation for Planning Board, street name, or street names. The supporting explanation, to name public streets, the east-west connector and the stub streets that come off of it. Background, the city is nearing completion of the east-west connector road which connects Water Street East to McEwen Road. In addition to the east-west connector road, three stub streets were created. Stub streets are for future development on either side of the east-west connector. One of the stubs will connect to a proposed subdivision, Travelers Rest Mini Homes, which in turn will connect to Cardinal Street. Streets nearing construction are shown on the map. The subdivision and site development bylaw, oh, sorry, that was my own note that I typed above. So the report, as required, under the Emergency 911 Act, the city is a designated municipality and is responsible for assigning street names and civic addresses. A public road must be named if it provides access to three or more improved properties. Schedule B of the zoning bylaw outlines the policy for street naming. In most cases, new streets are created as a result of a subdivision and site development bylaw, and the developer submits street name or names to be considered, whether it be names from the approved street name list or not. In this case, the city has led the east-west connector road development. The street name committee, which consists of a Development Officer, Director of Police Services, and the Director of Fire Services are proposing the street names, and the street suffix will be street. The street suffix is determined as per the street naming policy, Schedule B, subdivision and site development bylaw, unless it connects to an existing street where the street suffix is existing. The street naming committee was tasked with submitting proposed names for the newly constructed streets associated with the east-west connector road and its stub roads. The suggested street names listed above have been included in the approved street name registry, which was previously authorized by City Council. The street naming committee review, the committee has reviewed the proposed new street layout plan and recommends the following street names for consideration. The selected names will need to be submitted to 911 for verification to ensure there are no conflicts with existing street names within the city or neighboring municipalities. For the east-west connector road itself, Ryan, the street suffix will be street, so Ryan Street, being as this is a continuation of an existing street, Ryan Street. As per Section 4B of the street naming policy, a street that is continual shall have one name throughout its entire length. If a street name change is inevitable, the change must occur at an intersection. Stub Road A, Capital, Strathcona, or Sunrise, it's three options, is that right? Yeah, so it'll be either one of those three. And the street suffix will be Avenue as per street name policy, so Capital, Strathcona, or Sunrise Avenue. For Stub Road B, the selections are Victory, Olympia, Loyalist, or Enman, and the street suffix will be Avenue as per street name policy. And Stub Road C, Cardinal, the street suffix will be Street, being as this is a continuation of an existing street, Cardinal Street. As per Section 4B of the street naming policy, a street that is continual shall have one name throughout its entire length. If a street name change is inevitable, the change must occur at an intersection. Information of the history of the proposed names provided by staff are on the following page. Is it in the best interest of everyone that I just go through that as well, so everyone watching, listening kind of knows what we're dealing with here? So the east-west connector roads, the proposed street names with history. There is the mercantile theme, so Capital, the Capital Theater was one of Canada's oldest operating cinemas, 1880s to 2000. It was first called Happyland Theater in 1911, and around 1922, it was changed to Capital Theater and Tea Room. The Tea Room became a separate entrance to the bowling alley downstairs after the 40s. Olympia, Olympia Ice Cream Parlor and Cabaret was an Acadian business in Summerside, opened in 1911 and was bought by ADL in 1958. Victory, Victory Dry Cleaners located on Central Street sponsored many sports teams in Summerside, either wholly or as a partner, especially bowling, as the owners Gordy and Russ Kelly were avid bowlers. And Enman, in November of 1901, John Muirhead sold his drug business to Percy Enman. Muirhead was Enman's uncle. Gutted by the fire in 1916, and in 1920, it was located in the Godkin Building on Water Street, later in the Strong Building on Water Street. Hotel theme, Strathcona, the Strathcona was a notable landmark building located on Queen Street, the only building on Queen Street leading to Queen's Wharf. It was the first building built in Summerside and was destroyed by the great fire of 1906. Land Sea or Marinescape theme, Sunrise, the street is located in the former community of Wilmette, which is located at the east end of the city where the sun rises each day on our city. And heritage names slash culture, Loyalist. In Canada, a loyalist refers to a person who remained loyal to the British Crown during the American Revolution, 1775 to 1783, and subsequently migrated to British North America, which later became part of Canada. And I believe that's it. More of a information-type presentation? I don't believe there's anything to vote on this evening? Unless we have to decide on?
Yeah, Councilor Ron, the names that are put forth, we asked that three be put forth for each name in case one of them gets dubbed out by the 911 conflict. So we're looking for direction from council on which of these names that they would, these are the ones the street naming committee proposed. If somebody else has another name, then we have to forward this on as soon as possible so we can start getting the street name signs ready and for the road to be open.
Okay, Councillor Adams, Councillor McDoel.
All right, so when this, are we voting on this later? When is the final, is this the final chat about this?
So there's no, when the names are chosen from the approved street name list, there's no need for council to approve them, they already approved all of those names. We're just asking for council's input, or if they agree with the names that are put forth by the street naming committee, that's great. If they want something else changed or added to that, we can certainly consider that.
Okay, so for Stub Road A, that leads into Woodridge, correct? Okay, so for that, I would propose a change. It's not on this, I don't have all the street names here, but I would propose Woodridge Avenue for that. Woodridge has been a huge contributor to our housing in Summerside, and it's ever-expanding. I think that Sunrise, I do see, I don't see Capital or Strathcona out that way. Sunrise, I do guess, because it goes towards the east, but myself and people in the area that have reached out Woodridge would be more, would be looked upon more favorably. For Stub Road B, I'm not sure why we skipped over Hall Avenue whenever Hall is on the street name list of approved names, I believe, and it literally goes on to Hall Land. So I would highly recommend that we consider paying some respect to that as well as the Woodridge name. And Stub C makes complete sense to me because it's going on to an already existing street. So I guess I'm just interested on why we skipped over Hall, and if we can make those considerations for Stub A and Stub B.
Stub Road A, I'll speak to that first. Naming it Woodridge Avenue would be probably a conflict with Woodridge Place, so we did have an incident prior to this when we had Heritage Trailer Park and Heritage Court, and emergency services went to the wrong place. So that'd just be a caution on that. There was no reason why we skipped over names, they were just asked by the committee to submit three names, it was...
So you just grabbed the next three type of thing?
Exactly, yeah.
I would, Woodridge would still be my preferred one, because we have, like, you know, I've dealt with the Kelly Avenue and Muskosh, Kelly, Muskosh and Kelly in Summerside. And Woodridge Avenue is literally leading into Woodridge Place, so even if they go to Woodridge Place, they're still in the right area. It's not like you're at a different end of the city. So I would still propose that Woodridge Avenue be looked at for Stub A, and I'm, I guess I'm very disappointed that Hall was not looked at for Stub Road B to begin with, so I'd really like to look at that one, too. Not sure what everybody else thinks.
So, just so we're all clear on this, so from here, Councillor Adams has proposed a couple names for the other roads. You guys will now take, how are they prioritized? Like, when you guys submitted to us, let's say if there was no conversation here today about anything with any conflict with any of the names, would Capital then been the first one, or Strathcona been the first one, or Sunrise? Like, do you know, are they in priority to anything, or it's just three names, just because there's three names in case?
So this is a little bit new to us, because normally the city doesn't do the naming of the streets. It's usually done by the developer, but in this case, we technically are the developer, I guess we're putting this roadway in. The street naming committee is only to vent, I should say, vet the names, not to really come up with them, but we were asked by CAO to do that, so I basically just reached out to the other two persons on the committee, and they just gave me, I wrote them down in the order they submitted them.
Okay.
And then I added my own onto that as well.
And I guess the reason why I'm asking, I'm just wondering how we proceed from here, if Councillor Adams says, you know what, I don't want to get into like, oh, I prefer Sunrise, I prefer this.
I would still prefer is put the ranking down, because if they look at the first one and they accept the first one, and then Hall or Woodridge is number two or three, and that's really what you preferred, I would still prefer, put them two in order and say, this is our first. If they find a conflict, they'll go to number two. If there's a conflict with that, they'll go to number three, you know, so that we, if we submit all three and there's no conflict, they'll more likely just pick the first one. So if you have a preference?
And the names that are not on the list have to go back to council for approval. They have to be kind of vetted back through the same process we're going through tonight, except for there'll be another step where that name would be presented.
Could we possibly in some way bypass that tonight if we're sitting here and we amend what's in front of us and add Hall to it? Like, speaking of Hall or Woodridge or anything? Like, is there a whole, if we're just talking a name?
Hall is on the name, but Woodridge is not.
Oh, it's not on the approved?
Right, right.
Gotcha.
Hall's an easy one because it's already there.
We can settle tonight.
Yes, Stub B can be settled tonight. Well, settled is a prioritized in order of the three. If for some reason, emergency services finds a reason why there's concerns with Hall, then we'd come back to council with the remaining two.
They would go, they would put it in order, one, two, and three, and then we're, they're gonna, if number one's available, they'll pick it, if not, they're gonna pick the two.
If one is Hall's and it's not available, then we move to the next one. Because Woodridge is not part of the approved list, that will have to come back at a later date, which is the 15th essentially, if we can get it vetted by emergency services.
Okay, so from, and I'll let others speak here in a second, but from here in Councillor Adams, and it's in her ward, so we'll put some weight to that, I guess, but she sounded like she had preference of Woodridge one, Sunrise two, and then so on, and then it sounded like she had preference of Hall for Stub B, followed by, I have no, I have no preference one way or the other, and it makes it tough when there's so many names in front of us, so I just don't want to, I don't know how we get into that. As a council, we're all gonna have different opinions and whatever, but, yeah, so based on that, if anybody has anything else to add, we'll continue on, go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple of questions and a comment, I guess. I do agree with Hall, and the, so Linda, just to clarify, if we were to pick these tonight, the, does it not come to council for a vote?
If they're picked from the approved street name list, no, it does not come back to council for a vote.
Okay, but just, this is just the Planning Board, right? So why would the Planning Board be picking the names and not being approved by council?
So Planning Board is not picking the names, the street committee?
Right.
They propose the names and then we're either accepting or...
Why would Planning Board be approving them?
It's just an agenda item on the Planning Board meeting, we're not voting as a Planning Board.
I think what Bruce is saying, it should have came to the right...
We always, we always approve the names prior, so I'm just not sure who changed the water on the beans here.
The reason for the process is that council has already pre-endorsed, all of council has already pre-endorsed the names on the list.
Yeah.
So those names, as long as we're recommending the names from the list, they don't have to come back to council because council's already endorsed them. The names that aren't on the list will be required to come back to council because they're not on the list, they're not pre-endorsed by all of council. Hence why we're a Planning Board versus council. And that happens relatively often when developers come in with new names, that's why we're so used to choosing them as a council, but in this situation...
And I agree with what you're saying, but the other, the other thing is, I have no, I have no qualms with the other names, but Ryan Street, just to be, extend Ryan Street as the east-west connector, I think we're losing an opportunity to honor somebody, anybody. I'm just saying that I think we're sort of bypassing that, and I think it's an opportunity for council to come up with a, with a name. And the other part of it is, I would like to, I don't know why we didn't go out to the public and let them pick a name for it. Yeah, for the connection road. I just, to name it Ryan Street, ah, I don't think there's very much thought went into that, so.
What's the history on Ryan Street?
Not much, I don't think.
I do not know. If anybody knows the history?
Anyway, I just, I think we're losing an opportunity there, so.
And I guess not to debate any of this too much, but we do have approved street names that have already been vetted by council. I assume Ryan being extended is just due to the fact that it's a continuation of Ryan, and it's probably the safest way to continue on with that street. So I'd be very cautious of going out to the public and asking for names, because then you continue on the, people recommend names to go on the street naming.
It's getting late now, but I think this process should have started a few months ago.
Possibly, yeah.
Anyway, it is, there's an intersection there, and it can be named something else, so I, I guess I'm okay with everything, but I'm not okay with Ryan Street. Thanks.
But I do agree with Councillor Bruce in a sense that the east-west connector has been talked about for quite a long time. It's going to be one of our main thoroughfares throughout the city from one side to the other. And I also agree, nothing against Ryan or, you know, any of the names coming forth, but I do think that it is something that, to me, it's kind of like a pivotal change for Summerside where that road is going through, for connecting, and I think it's deserving of a name that people would identify. As, you know, it's a major change for the city. Anyway, just leave it there.
And I know Councillor Trenholm here next, just wanted to sort of chime in. I agree with Councillor Adams' suggestions, so I support that. I also agree with Bruce, I just want to make sure that we don't dismiss whoever Ryan is or was. I mean, I don't think, I don't think we should just dismiss who that is, obviously there's a history there, so just to say that, no, they're not important, I think that's wrong, but, yeah, I think we have, I agree with your statement in that we might have an opportunity to honor someone or something, so, Councillor Trenholm.
Yeah, I think it's interesting for sure, because it is coming to Planning Board, and I'm just curious with staff, I think staff are asking us to prioritize the names, and then if one is picked and it passes the test, then that's what it'll be, is that, is that pretty much it, right? Okay. So if it's coming to Planning, and since, I would just, if we can just break it down to, I think Stub B, since Hall is already an approved name that we provided, for the, I guess just so it doesn't keep on lagging on, we do have three members of Planning here, so if Planning Board are in a position to say Hall will be number one, because I certainly support that as well, what I'm hearing is all three members present, support Hall being number one for that, but if we had number two in case Hall doesn't work, honestly, I'm open to what people feel about that, I'm not. And even Stub A, if we're looking at Woodridge, I'm fine if that's one, I think we need to respect that, Councillor Adams, it is, it is her ward, sorry, and it, whether it will pass the 911 test, we can see. If it doesn't, then we can move on to number two, and Sunrise also seems appropriate, so I think at this point, those items, but I think if we can look at what is number, the second priority for Stub B, and again, I don't have that, but if people are, if this does come to Planning, so what are the other two thinking, I guess?
Is there anyone not in favor of those recommendations? Hall and Woodridge, for those two? And I know there's still the main connector that we'll have to give direction on.
And it's not that it's like my preference, it's just Woodridge has, it's like, it's a huge housing development, and, I mean, it's, you know, some people have lived their own life sometimes, it's a starting point for some people, so, and it's continually growing, and I just think that, and if for some 911 reason it's not doable, Sunrise does make sense. it's not doable, Sunrise does make sense, um, but that, that's where the Woodbridge came from. If it was in the, like, you know, if it was in St. Elners, then I might be like, why wouldn't he name Woodbridge a street at St. Elners when it's Woodbridge Place? But it's Woodbridge going into Woodbridge, so I'm just thinking.
So safe to say that Hall, followed by Sunrise, followed by, since we need three.
I understood Hall was for street B?
Yes, B.
And what's your second choice for street B?
Could I say something before we continue with that then? Um, completely agree with everything that's been said about Hall, Woodbridge, great, um, renaming Ryan Street to something else. Also think that's a great idea. Uh, when I look at the names though, for stub road B, when you look at Olympia based on um, the uh, an Acadian business in Summerside, I think it'd be great to be able to honor the Acadian people in Summerside. Um, that being said, when you then look at the term for loyalist, it seems a bit contradictory to have uh, an Acadian business that is potentially being honored, followed by a group of people who are somewhat responsible for deportation of the Acadian people. I would suggest that perhaps loyalist would be the last choice for that road. Um, that is just my opinion on that. Um, but I would say that Olympia would be a great second choice behind Hall if that was not able to be chosen.
I just had a, and I asked Rec to make sure I wasn't way off base, but don't we already have, um, so Acadia is where now? Gavin, okay, okay, right, okay. I was just, I was like, I was trying to think of if it was Gavin or not, okay. I was wondering where it was in the city in relation to, okay.
Okay, so to keep this moving, uh, it sounds like we're good with stub A. Linda, Aaron, you guys get the preferences for stub A?
I've got two names, I've got Woodbridge and Sunrise.
Yeah.
And, do we have a third name?
Do we need a third name?
Yeah, we're gonna need a third name.
Capital. If it gets a third name, I guess I picked it.
So for stub B, we have Hall and Olympia.
We got Hall, Olympia.
Is there a third on there?
Well, we don't want Olympia and Loyalist, so that leaves Enman.
So we need a second one for Hall. And do we have this three names that, like, are listed?
Well, there's Enman there too.
I believe they were circulated.
Like this, this is circulated, but is there like a complete list?
The names are re-approved.
We'd have it from.
I, I guess I would sort of caution us a little bit that we ask a committee to select names and then bring them forward, and then if we throw all their names out, I don't know if I would ever want to serve on a committee in the future that would do that. So I, I think, I think the changes we're making and asking, I think, are very reasonable, but I'd be very cautious to say, ah, is there any other names? Because I don't like any of the names on there, and that doesn't sit well with me, and I, I just, I think we need to be somewhat respectful of the people that do put their time. Yeah, there's another name in, and I, I'm fine with whatever. I think it's, I think we get pretty, if we start selecting names personally, I think it starts to get off track, so.
I prefer Olympia.
So we have Hall, Olympia.
Olympia is that, we've written that, Hall, street B, Hall, Olympia, yes, sir.
We need third, Enman, sir.
Enman it is.
Okay, so then we've got Woodbridge, Sunrise, and Capital. Street A. And we need some direction on Ryan.
And C, we're confirming C is still.
C, C, so everybody's good with Cardinal?
Cardinal makes sense, I think everybody's.
Okay, Ryan Street. Again, recommendations are, if you're gonna change it, but we'll have three different names on that street if we add a third one.
I, I think it's very reasonable to continue on with Ryan as we are with Cardinal and so on. I, I do agree with council that it's nice to find ways to honor, um, but I just, I think we need to do it in a manner that's, un- unless we're changing all of Ryan, I, I think that this has been done for a reason, and if we go changing all of Ryan, I think there's gonna be businesses and homeowners and other people that won't like what we're doing either, so I'd be cautious.
Stay there until the intersection, right to the school. From the intersection, uh, which is the east-west connector, that's all that I'm talking about. I wasn't gonna change.
The new section.
McEwen, yeah.
And I guess I just want to point out then, that street from South Drive to McEwen, to Water Street will have three different names. You'll have three different names, we'll have Pope, then we'll have Ryan, and then we'll have a third name, and then we don't have that name provided here.
And am I correct in saying it's gonna have to be named before the street opens, and we're looking at times connected to that as well? Okay.
Switching names mid, because if we start at the St. Elners Irving to Water Street East, we have three or four names all the way out on one street, so.
I just think it's an opportunity for us to.
Yeah. I wish we knew the history of why it was called Ryan Street, I guess, I'm, I'm.
I would prefer that they.
I know, I just Googled it, I couldn't find anything.
I- is there a way from here you guys can proceed, um, to vet the current names that have been presented to us the way they are? But then also look into any concerns with naming Ryan something else? And, because we're gonna sit around here tonight and talk about possible names for that extension, and I assume people have some sort of thought in their mind to be bringing it up. So if, if that's the case, then I think we need to let staff proceed, so they can do the work they need, so we don't hold them up. And if there's something in the meantime that can be brought forward to either the committee or it's gotta be approved to go in the name list and then come back to, like, there's steps to it, so I think we need to allow this process to continue the way staff have done it with maybe some recommendations coming back. JP, do you have anything, thoughts or on how to make sure we proceed correctly here?
Outside of the fact that the, the process has been identified to council and adopted by council, and then the pre-approved names have been approved by council for just what you're saying is to expedite the process so that staff, like, staff don't get to select the names, we just get to select from a list and we follow through a procedure, and that's kind of the, we're bound within that process. So if council wants to go outside of that, they certainly can, and then there's a process to do so. There, but as to Aaron's point, there's a timeline associated with opening a road. It can be opened as Ryan, and then we can go through an additional process to change it from Ryan to something else down the road, uh, should be see fit. But I think, you know, opening a road from a safety perspective and from an emergency services perspective, it needs to have a name the day it opens, so um, I think it'd be important to follow through with Ryan for the time being, and then if there's a desire for council to go and do a contest or something along those lines, that could certainly be discussed then as well.
Thoughts on that?
Well, I, I think they can, you know, see if, if Ryan is approved, but I, I don't wanna rule out the opportunity, because I mentioned this a couple of times earlier, about the opportunity for the city to name this street. And uh, I don't have any name in mind either, so, uh, but I, I really think that we're losing an opportunity here. Is there, it'll always be called the east-west connector, let's get over that, so.
Yeah.
Anyways, uh, but that's just my thought, so if we uh, if we decide that we need to change it, then uh, council can do that.
Can we also not just look, excuse me, at the, like, could we not get same thing that we have here of three or four names that are already on the pre-approved list to come back to council to see if that is a potential fit? Like, I feel like we're just going in circles right now. Uh, so in, instead of going in circles, could we, if we want to name it something other than Ryan Street, which I'm in big favor of doing, could we not just get the same kind of thing that we have right here in the next meeting to say, here's four that are already pre-approved from the list that council has adopted, and we can pick a name from there? Since we are on a time crunch, I do agree with Bruce. I think it'd be great if we could open it up to the public and have a big contest to do it, that'd be fantastic. But if we're on more of a time crunch and we can't realistically have that done, well, then we can't open the street, right? Like, we don't have a name, so we're on a bit of a time crunch. Um, but I mean, it, to me, it just seems like that could potentially be a bit of a, a common ground of, we already have a whole list of street names that are there that could potentially come back to us, and we could pick something from that, um, but that is just my opinion.
So, go ahead, Linda.
I'm thinking we're gonna be in the same position we're in right now. The committee did make recommendations, and already we've gone, moved from those recommendations, so if we come back with four names for Ryan Street, we could be having the same discussion again, so. We're looking for direction from the street naming committee so we can pass it on, get street signs ordered and what have you. If there's another process that we need to engage in, then we can certainly do that.
It, would, just a second, would council be okay with staff proceeding with what we just directed them to do with the A, B, and C? And continue with Ryan as the name? And if, to CEO's point, if we are really wanting to change that street, we can order some new signs in the future and change. There's not currently anything on there with a street address, like actual housing, so we can, but we, to open the street, we have to have a street name on it, and I don't think it's the time to. It should, I agree, Bruce probably should've came back earlier maybe, but we're, we have a committee.
And I'll agree with that, that, you know, just carry on with the Ryan Street, and if, and if this council decides that, you know, we should have another name on it or, or some other name comes off that list that we think, then council has the opportunity to, to change that name. Uh, but uh, I, I wanted to bring that forward because I had asked for this a couple of times, and uh, nobody, or I shouldn't say nobody, but it just didn't seem to be a priority to get it done, and now we're down against the wall, and uh, we haven't got a choice basically, so uh, I think that's wrong. And I would've liked to have seen it go out to the, to the community and let the community select a name or honor somebody that we really think should be honored, so, thank you.
But if we're gonna do that, we have to, you can open it as Ryan, but we have to decide on the name, and I'm okay with naming it something different, that's completely okay with me, I agree. Um, but it has to be done before anything gets built there, or, because I don't wanna make people have to change addresses. And, you know, especially if, you know, if people build a lot of multi-unit through there, then it's a lot of work for a lot of people, right? It's a hassle. So if we're going to do it, I'd like to move on it in like October. Put it out now to the public, what do you want it named? Submit your names, and then we'll decide in October, because it's opening later in the fall.
So to move this forward, uh, Linda, Aaron, do you guys feel you're, know where we're going?
Yeah, I'll clarify it.
Yeah.
Don't take it personal. Street C is gonna be Cardinal, we'll sign it, the main street, we'll mark it Ryan Streets. You guys can give direction to CEO to start whatever that process is, circulate the full list of names that are already approved and try and get rankings from whoever as to what they are. Yeah, we'll find out if we can, what that, what was, uh, Ryan Street. Ryan Street used to go over and dead end at the mall, and then it got realigned over to Pope Road, so we'll have to dig with that. We'll list street B, Hall, Olympia, and Enman. Street A, we'll go, we've still got Woodbridge that's in there that's not on the list, we'll have to walk through that. But Woodbridge, Sunrise, and Capital, that'll be the rankings that we'll send off to see if there's any um, conflicts with the fire jurisdictions and the other areas and what have you. And if there's any changes, we'll be back here. You guys can proceed with your other, I agree, we have to have a name. If someone's walking on the trail and they get to that intersection and need an ambulance, we have to send them, they're gonna be at the intersection of something, we have to name it something. Even if there's not a, a building there, it has to have the name, if there's a car accident or pedestrian, someone walking on the sidewalk or what have you. And we renamed Harbor Drive Heather Moise years later, lots of address changes that were in, so I agree, get it done if you wanna do it before anything gets built there with a number of addresses and, and start your process.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah. Even if a permit's issued for something, something's not gonna be built or opened, see, but I would still get on your process, and you still have time to do it.
All right, Counselor Dron, you move for adjournment? Oh, you're, yeah, you're chairing planning board, yeah. Yeah, that is your job. So that meeting will be adjourned. All right, let's call the committee whole meeting to order for September second, twenty twenty-five. Uh, approval of the agenda, any member of council? Seconded by Counselor McDougall, all those in favor? Conflict of interest? Not seeing any. Committee reports and recommendations, starting off with Counselor Bruce McDougall, Finance Committee.
Okay, uh, the year-end audit is, uh, sorry.
Turn this on, yeah. Our year-end audit is in progress, and audit financial statements will be presented on uh, September twenty-fifth. At our September finance meeting, we will be reviewing the latest draft of our debt management policy for both the general tax fund and utilities. And staff will be starting to document uh, an inventory of our services, identifying key activities with service expectations for the upcoming service level review, uh, what is being facilitated by Gordon McIntosh in mid-October. And that is my report. There's any questions?
Any questions of council? Not seeing any, we'll move on to Bylaw and Governance, Counselor McCollman.
Uh, just a couple of updates. The uh, Bylaw Governance Committee will be starting uh, in September. The September seventeenth meeting coming forward, and the staff have been working on some of the bylaws, and they will be bringing that work forward for discussion with the committee. That's it for my report.
Thank you, Counselor McCollman, any questions for Counselor McCollman? Not seeing any, we'll move on to Planning Committee, Counselor Dron.
Uh, no real updates since uh, June-July. We still have staff actively working on um, complete streets policy development and uh, possible amendments to our Parkland Education Fund uh, policy, as well as uh, crosswalk policy development. So we hope to have uh, something to present to council, uh, still hope, so hoping for October, November this year, um, at least for the complete streets and the Parkland Education, uh, as staff sort of completes their ongoing uh, communication with uh, outside people and parties to, to help uh, develop that, so hopefully we'll have more updates, if not October, November.
Thank you, Counselor Dron, any questions for Counselor Dron? Not seeing any, we'll move to Counselor Adams' action plan for safer communities.
Thank you, um, we met last month, and just some dates um, that will be pushed out on social media for reminders. Um, September fifteenth, there'll be a virtual presentation to staff on, um, JP, what's the, the name of the, of the study? What did we title it?
It's a Crime Prevention Needs Assessment.
Crime Prevention Needs Assessment, okay. Crime Prevention Needs Assessment, the virtual presentation um, by the researcher will be September fifteenth. Um, that is to all of council, correct? And then September sixteenth, the first meeting of the committee, and that's the people and the public that put their name in and so on to sit. Um, that's September sixteenth, so after everybody gets the presentation in person, then the committee will meet immediately following. Um, October fifteenth is a public session. October 15th is a public session, and that's gonna be in-person with the researcher. And it'll be a chance for the public to hear it. They can also, they can have an opportunity for some questions and commenting, too. And then November 11th has to be decided, because, another day has to be picked for that, because it's on Remembrance Day. And the 18th and the 25th, those are meetings with committee stakeholders. And we broke the committee stakeholders down into two or three groups. It was youth and seniors in one, and then health and social services groups were in a second one, and then the business and corporate community was a third one. The reason we did it in that order is, you know, we wanted to hear what the youth and seniors were saying about what they see and what they feel about our, our community and our neighborhoods. And then we could roll into, on the 18th, seeing what health and social services are offering, as well as what their needs are. And then the last one we did was the business and corporate community, because they're always so generous to ask what they can do to help. So, we thought if we leave that to the last, then we could work with them to say, this is what we're hearing. What do you guys have in return that you might wanna assist with? So, that's the reason for that, for that order. But those will be pushed out quite often on social media, so if anybody, please share them, because the more that, you know, show up for the public session on October 15th, the better, so.
Thank you, Councilor Adams, any questions for Councilor Adams? Not seeing any, we'll move on to Parks and Green Space Plan with Councilor Trenton.
Thank you, just a short update here, the community survey's completed. So, 296 people, residents of Summerside, have completed the survey, so we're just gonna tabulate the results. And our committee itself will be meeting at the end of September. I think it's the third week of September, just we didn't meet over the summer, based on it being a pretty busy time for the Parks and Rec people here, so that's about it, thanks.
All right, any questions for Councilor Trenton? Not seeing any, we'll move on to the Youth Advisory Committee, Councilor Cameron.
Thank you. Myself and Director Gunn are doing an information session with Three Oaks on September 2nd to engage with the grade 10 to 12 students to start applications to get the members appointed to the committee. I've also reached out to ECO Sumal to see if they are interested in joining, in doing an information session as well to have some of their students apply, have not heard from them yet, but hoping to get them on board as well, and move forward from there.
Thank you, Councilor Cameron, any questions for Councilor Cameron? Not seeing any, next town is, next town, next is Downtown Transformation with myself. So, we've started to take the report from the entire committee and, and break it down into more manageable pieces. From there, we are bringing it to the Committee of Council to bring forward. I was really hoping that we would have that done by now, but there was a little hiccup late summer with my daughter, so we had some appointments that we had to attend, so that sort of got pushed back. But we'll get it back on track. The hope would be to have it back to entire council for the October meeting, so, and then we can have stuff ready for budget time. Good job, Councilor Snow, any questions for Councilor Snow? Not seeing any? Perfect. Electric Utility Governance Review, Councilor Morrison.
Thank you, Deputy Snow. I don't believe we had a meeting since our last committee, the hall meeting, if I remember correctly, so. Nothing new to report, I think we're still waiting for some information from our external legal team, so when that comes through. I think there's a meeting, again, later this month, so maybe next month, there'll be some new stuff to report.
Thank you, Councilor Morrison, any questions for Councilor Morrison? Not seeing any, we'll move to Smart City Initiatives, Service Delivery and AI, Councilor Cameron.
Thank you. We have not met over the summer. I keep saying to Councilor Dron that this, it feels a bit like a cursed committee. Every time we set up a meeting time, something happens and we have to cancel. But we do have a meeting coming up next week or the week after, but we have a mandate that circulated, and a phased approach of how we could potentially roll out things within the city. So, going forward, we're just kinda seeing if that's achievable, and moving forward from there.
Thank you, Councilor Cameron, any questions for Councilor Cameron? Not seeing any, we'll move on to SEED, Senior Engagement Equity Directive, Councilor Trenton.
Thank you, so the public appointment process has ended, so we have, I guess, 10 individuals who have put their name forward. So, now our selection committee will, I guess, identify which ones, which five. We can submit up to five people to be in the committee, so we're looking forward to that. And I'm really excited to have, I guess, quality individuals on their names, and so it's gonna be a tough challenge there to determine who would be the up-to-five candidates. So, on September 15th, they'll come back to council for council approval, are in consideration, and with the end result, hoping to begin our first meeting at the end of September. So, timeframes are pretty tight, but we wanna get a lot done in a short period of time, so thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Trenton, any questions for Councilor Trenton? Not seeing any, we'll move on to Five, Staff Reports and Recommendation, Half Update Presentation, City Planner. Megan Williams is joining us, welcome, Megan. Once you're set, you can take it away.
Good evening, everybody. So, tonight I'm just gonna be reintroducing the Housing Accelerator Finder Half Two, just to refresh your memory and to prepare you for the next batch of deliverables, and to give you an update on what we've achieved so far. So, I wanna make sure that we acknowledge how much work has been done to date, not only how much work went into writing and submitting the half-application, but what's followed since. Over the fourth quarter of 2024, council went through the process of amending the zoning bylaw and official plan to adopt policies and regulations to allow gentle density in our community. Reviewing the proposed amendments, listening to those impacted by the changes, and making a decision that balances that feedback with the current and long-term needs of Summerside is no easy feat. We are carefully tracking our building permits. We were given a target to have 677 new dwelling units by the third anniversary of the half-period, which is December 2026. That target is broken down into three categories, two of which actually do apply to Summerside. So, we've got to have 492 new missing middle-type housing, 90 other multi-unit housing types. And so, for clarification, missing middle ranges from a building with a minimum of two dwelling units, so like a semi-detached, all the way up to four stories. Accessory dwelling units, such as garden suites, are also considered missing middle. And multi-unit housing units or anything outside of the missing middle definition that isn't a single detached dwelling, so think like apartment buildings, things that are five stories plus. In addition to these growth targets, we have the additional target of adding 157 new affordable housing units within our community. Affordable in this context means the house, the cost of housing is 30% or less of household income. The Year Two Progress column on the screen includes occupancy permits issued up to August 25th. So, we're in pretty good shape to meet the targets by next year. So far, we've got 357 total new missing middle housing units, 40 other multi-unit housing units, and 96 new affordable housing units. We've also been putting the half-funding towards the construction of the East-West Corridor. It's been well underway for a few years now, and we're in good shape to have the work completed by the end of September. Don't quote me on that if we miss that. All right, so we are in the home stretch of completing the remainder of the initiatives. Of the 14, we've fully completed five, and the remaining nine are on track to be completed by the end of the year, or first quarter of 2026. We are required to have these initiatives done this time in order to receive the full half-funding amount. To ensure we're meeting the tight deadlines, we've plotted out the next couple of months to give council time to make necessary decisions. There isn't much wiggle room, so failure to meet these initiative deadlines will impact the funds we receive, which in turn will impact the initiatives. So, we've got approximately $430,000 that are gonna be going towards five incentive streams, which will be going out to the public. We've been working with WESIX on the policies that would benefit residents and developers or builders within Summerside. So, these policies aim to incentivize new accessory dwelling units, increase our missing middle housing inventory, redevelop underused properties, encourage builders to use modular construction practices, and to increase our affordable housing inventory, by granting, all through granting money to successful applicants. We're expecting to bring these policies before council in early October, in addition to an enabling bylaw. Where I'm here mostly to refresh your memory and give you an idea of what's coming next, I won't go into further detail on the policies, just so we don't, we'll save that for early October. We will need direction from council on a couple of things. So, density bonusing, the design guidelines, and the zoning bylaw and official plan amendments regarding climate change before we can proceed with some of the initiative work. So, today, what you would've had in your package is an information piece on floodplain mapping, and then also the design guidelines. Those should've been included in the package. So, WESIX prepared these position papers for us and for council for your review. We don't need direction today, we'll be getting it coming back September 15th to get that direction. We just wanted to give council this information ahead of time to give them an opportunity to kind of mull it over and ask questions if they have any. So, I'll just go over the couple of position papers. So, you would've been given the CMHC Design Catalog and an information sheet on the flood mapping, so we'll talk about the design guidelines first. A couple of our hash initiatives include requirements to adopt design guidelines. The Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation, or CMHC, has created a series of missing middle designs. The intent is to provide a set of standardized drawings that improve building and development permit processing times for infill or missing middle housing. It's an initiative that many half-communities have been told to complete. So, up on the screen, I've got some examples of an accessory dwelling unit design that CMHC has created for the Atlantic provinces. They don't currently have the architectural drawings included in the packages. Those are expected to be released in the future, though I don't know what the timeline is going to be. I do know that, due to provincial legislation, the majority of the proposed designs require an architect's sign-off, and I'm unsure at this time whether there's been a solution between CMHC, PEI Architects Association, and other relevant stakeholders. As acknowledged in the position paper, Summerside already reviews and issues decisions on development and building permits really quickly. So, because of this, we don't expect to see a massive change in our timelines if these guidelines are adopted. However, adopting them will provide a convenient set of drawings for builders, and will give builders an opportunity to submit a set of building designs to Summerside to include in the guidelines that would essentially be like pre-approved. The design guidelines will be like another tool and toolbox, not only for us, but for the builders as well. I'd like to note as well, that even if the guidelines are adopted, a site plan review is still gonna be required, so staff will still be looking whether the proposed building meets the zoning bylaw standards in terms of lot size and setbacks. So, in, to accompany the position papers that they wrote, WESIX reviewed the Atlantic region designs against our zoning standards to provide a visual representation, oh, I didn't put it in, which zones each design can be built in. So, if you turn to page 12 of the meeting package, you can see that simplified review. The, WESIX will also be preparing a general guideline or informational documents for the public. These documents will outline the CMHC Design Guidelines, and will outline the application process and site plan considerations for an accessory dwelling unit, essentially just to make the application process smoother for, for the public. Last piece, so two of our initiatives require us to address flood hazards in our community, both through mapping and through higher development standards, and to develop a climate change adaptation plan. The Floodplain Mapping Information Paper prepared by WESIX discusses the initiatives, how our existing planning and development documents address flood hazards and climate change, before exploring it in the PEI context and proposing different approaches for Summerside to mitigate the impacts of climate change. Fortunately, the province has done a considerable amount of work on this front. They've completed coastal and inland flood mapping for the whole province, and they've made this data publicly available. They've called the information hub CRIS, or Climate Hazard and Risk Information System. For folks who are interested, you can just Google CRISPEI, and it'll pop up. The map you see on the screen shows the moderate to low flood hazard 2100 layer from CRIS in pink with our municipal boundary and aerial imagery. So, to satisfy the requirements under these, under the half-initiatives, staff is gonna be bringing forward zoning bylaw and official plan amendments that will identify areas that are at risk for those coastal and inland flooding, as well as a series of regulations that will impact those areas. We'll have internal discussions before we bring them out, they're not coming in September, so just put a pin in wait. We're gonna come back and talk to council about them. The Climate Change Adaptation Plan will contain recommendations for policies, official plan and bylaw amendments intending to address a myriad of climate change topics, including flooding, extreme storm events, and extreme heat. Staff will bring these amendments forward to councils, for council's consideration at a later date. That concludes my presentation today, much shorter and sweeter than last time. You can expect to see another position paper in the near future on the density bonusing. If anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to try to answer them now, otherwise I'll see you folks on the 15th, and I can answer them then.
All right, thank you, Megan. I don't know if there's any questions, I think council will take the information you gave us today, and then, like you say, on the 15th, have our questions ready for, for then. Does that sound all right? Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan, for all your work.
Can we just ask that this little piece just be sent, that you have done, just be sent to us separately from this whole package? Like, the, yeah, like, yeah, like, can you just send us that, like, the? The slide, the presentation? Just so that whenever, we can look at it rather than go through this whole package online, do you mind? Okay. Oh, yeah, perfect, that'd be awesome, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Megan. All right, next, Six, with Committee Hall Discussion Items. We have one item on there, it's Active Transit, Active Transit Update from Councilor Trenton.
Thank you, yep, so I just have, I guess it's a proposed motion or a resolution to put on the table, I guess, so. Doing this at the committee of the hall, I'm not sure, but I've moved it, and, and Councilor Cameron has seconded it, so I think we just read it in, and then there's a discussion after, I believe?
Okay, if you wanna start with that, yep, we can.
Sure, sounds great. So, for an official all ages and all abilities Active Transportation Network Plan for the city of Summerside. So, whereas Active Transportation plays a wider role in promoting public health, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and enhancing the safety and quality of life of all residents, and whereas the city of Summerside recognizes the importance of fostering inclusive and accessible transportation infrastructure that accommodates people of all ages and abilities, and whereas the development of an Active Transportation Network Plan aligns with the city's overall vision to be a livable community, and several of its strategic objectives, strategies, and council statements of policy reflected in the official plan. So, number one, Sustainable Development, Section 3.4, to encourage less emphasis on the automobile, where street width and parking are reduced, and transit, walking, and cycling is promoted, on page 45. To create a pathway/trail system for the use of bipedestrians and cyclists for both recreational and transportation or commuting purposes, page 45. To create a dispersed network of parks, open spaces, and public squares with linkages to a trail system, page 45 again. Number two, Complete Street Strategy, which is Section 3.7.5. To develop an Active Transportation Plan. Now, you'll notice that when I submitted this in February, that was before our revised official plan was put in place, so some of these page numbers are just a little, little off, but the revised page number would be 58, with safe routes and key destinations, specifically to schools, on page 58. To encourage pedestrian-friendly road designs, page 58. To expand and the use of level, sorry, to expand the use of level of service standards to include bicycle and pedestrian levels of service in the analysis of all new transportation improvement projects, page 58. So, the third issue here, highlight, Community, Healthy Community Strategy, Section 3.7.6. To recreate a healthy built environment whereby res- to recreate a healthy built environment whereby residents can walk and bicycle safely, more easily connect with others in their neighborhood, and enjoy the outdoors, page fifty-nine. To encourage more active lifestyles through development and redevelopment designs that support walking and cycling, and continue to expand sidewalk and bicycle networks to create safer routes to schools, page sixty, and to create walkable neighborhoods, neighborhoods and streets, page sixty. And whereas our current Summerside Official Plan, twenty eighteen, lists as a council adopted objective to develop an active transportation plan, page fifty-eight, and improve bicycle and pedestrian circulation, page fifty-eight. And whereas the city of Summerside's Urban Core Plan, two thousand sixteen, states under the section make downtown bicycle friendly. With a growing immigrant population PEI and a growth in cycling tourism, there should be dedicated effort to improve bicycle facilities in the downtown. And it's page fif, sorry, page forty-eight. And whereas the mayor's task force on attainable living, the final report of October twenty twenty-three, adopted by council, states many challenges around housing, security, or income-related, or can be offset through other services such as transit and active transportation systems, and recommends a built active, sorry, a built infrastructure to support active transportation, page thirteen, and complete communities feature a mix of uses in the form that promotes walkability, equity, and inclusion, page eight. And whereas the city of Summerside's Planning Office created a thirty-five-page draft document entitled a green transportation plan for Summerside in April twenty oh seven, and whereas the city of Summerside's Planning Office issued a second draft of this web document, thirty-three pages, with a revised title, an active transportation plan for Summerside, October twenty twelve. And whereas the city council directed CIO to bring forward an official active transportation network for the city of Summerside for council's review, consideration, and potential adoption, April twenty twenty-three. And whereas a draft active transportation network map was presented to council at the community, committee of the hall meeting in January twenty twenty-four. And whereas the city of Summerside is actively exploring a complete treats policy, and an official active transportation plan would serve as a complementary initiative, ensuring a cohesive and unified approach to creating inclusive, multimodal infrastructure. And whereas public input and collaboration with diverse stakeholders, including residents, advocacy groups, and subject matter experts are essential to ensure success and inclusivity with such a plan. And whereas a dedicated working group would provide the focus expertise, divert diverse perspectives, and coordinate effort necessary to design and recommend a comprehensive active transportation network plan tailored to meet the unique needs of Summerside. I don't know how you do this, Justin. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Summerside established a working group to design an official all ages and all abilities active transportation network plan for the city of Summerside. And be it further resolved that the working group shall include, but not limited to, representatives from city council, municipal staff, local residents, advocacy organizations, and local and provincial experts in active transportation and urban planning. Conduct public consultations and seek feedback from a diverse range, diverse range of community members to ensure inclusivity and address barriers to active transportation. Three, develop recommendations for routes, infrastructure improvements, policy initiatives, and programs to promote active transportation, ensuring alignment with best practices and universal design principles. Four, prepare a draft active transportation network plan to be presented to council for review and approval within six months of the working group's first meeting. And be it further resolved that this AT working group be a subcommittee of the planning committee. And be it further resolved that adequate resources, including staff and time, including staff, time, and funding, be allocated to support the working group's activities and ensure it's a successful development of an official active transportation network plan before October twenty twenty-six.
Okay, thank you councillor Trentholm. It's obvious you and maybe others, somebody put a lot of work into this document, so thank you for that. I, I'm wondering if, I don't know, if we're handling this the right way. Should this possibly go to planning board and then from there come back to council, or, there's a lot to take in here. And I read it this morning and still trying to take it all in. Yeah, I'm asking, I guess, you councillor, CIO.
So the, this type of work, I guess, could certainly be assigned to the planning committee. And whether the planning committee decided that there was enough room in terms of their workload to do it themselves, or look at a subcommittee of the planning committee to conduct that work and bring it forward through those channels and back to council for review and potentially adoption. The planning committee doesn't have the, procedurally, planning committee can't establish its own subcommittees without approval of all of council. So if that is what the chair and the group, the planning group, believe they need, which is a subcommittee, then they could bring that back to council for endorsement for a subcommittee to work solely on this. If you're asking me from a staff workload perspective, I would suggest that the committees are fairly full at the moment, so a subcommittee would be something I'd probably recommend, just to get some help from the community and other potential experts around to help us with a draft. But I still think it would flow nicely through the planning committee's work and then back to council for review. So I'm not sure if I answered your question there or not, but. You just need endorsement from council to send this AT network group work to planning committee or another committee, or establish a new committee.
It's safe to say that's how we have handled similar requests or.
Yeah, we've been operating under this committee structure for about a year now, and that tends to be where we put a lot of the work. And then the work gets done at the committee level and then brought back to council for review and either updates or changes, and then either back to committee or stays with council for a vote. But like I said, and councillor drawn near the chair, you could, you know, review the parking lot and the list of, you know, items in the planning committee and determine whether you want to keep it with the committee itself or establish a subcommittee. You don't have to decide right now. I'm just saying when it goes to planning committee, that's an option.
So councillor Trentholm, since you're bringing this forward, I guess firstly, does that sound reasonable to you to get it moving along, or? Is that
Yeah, I think.
what you're hoping to?
Yeah, from, I just know that from twenty oh seven, we've had a draft plan. And it's kind of been drafted, it's in our official plan, and being able to actually have a plan, and I've seen, I know the resources and time and staff, and I think if it goes to a subcommittee, and the subcommittee can recommend to the planning committee, this is what we put forward. Because if it goes to planning committee, I, there's so much going on. I think it's just so taxing. And I know what's on the agenda right now, and these are all important issues, right? And I think with active transportation, it's, it's, it's in the official plan, but is it, is it imminent, right? Like, we get other issues and it kind of takes, they get bumped ahead, and I think maybe justifiably they have to, right? But if it's a subcommittee that can actually work on it and develop recommendations, and it's, I think it'd be a lot easier and more time freeing for staff to say, okay, it comes to planning committee, planning committee can say, okay, review what was, what the subcommittee created, and then then it would go to council based on planning, planning committee's review of that document. That makes sense to me, so. Whatever's needed to bring it there, I'm in favor of.
Based on that, are we okay to, as a council, send this to planning board to subcommittee to come back and sort of vet what's going on here and make a recommendation, either send it, just so we're following the committee structure we've been doing historically, since we've implemented it? Are we okay with that?
Can I just ask a question?
For sure.
More out of ignorance than anything else. I've, I've tried to listen to some things that are happening in Halifax, Nova Scotia with regards to the active transportation and between the mayor and the council, and there's been a lot of debate or whatnot. I'm just wondering if we here on Prince Edward Island, are we receiving, and I know councillor Trentholm, you have done a phenomenal amount of work and research, and I respect that a great deal. What I'm wondering is, are we getting any feedback from other provinces similar to our size, similar communities, to see maybe what, what has happened, what has worked, what hasn't worked, what is the cost? What are things that they're looking at that maybe they've had to review or go through committee, or, you know? I'm just wondering if we're making so much work when some of that work has already been done. Could, could we capitalize on any of that to help us in this area? Because I'm hearing an awful lot of things through just following the bits that I can in Halifax, and there has been some opinions on both sides around the cost, around the traffic situation where there, there's sometimes there's impediments. So I would like for us to know, have some of those ideas so that we, we would know what we're working towards, if that makes sense. So I'm just putting that out to the group.
My hope or my thought would be that that's what will come out of some of those discussions with planning. And then if it goes to a subcommittee, that all that information, whether or not it's what's going on in, to your point, other municipalities, Halifax. I think some are starting to rip some out, and I, I think it's, you know, it's all information as a council and mayor that we would have to take into consideration moving forward, and I think councillor Trentholm understands that. I think whoever does the work moving forward, they'll hopefully bring that information back to us. Councillor Adams?
Is it correct that, does the province still not have their active transportation?
I think that is correct.
Plan in place?
JP, is that correct, or what's the?
Maybe not as, maybe it's not been in draft form as long as ours has, but it, I believe it's still in draft form, and I still think it's being kind of tightened. But there's still a significant amount of work that they've done, for sure.
Yeah. That just makes it so hard, right? Because, you know, when you're a municipality, several things we refer back to the province, you know? Okay, well, like, our wildlife, you know, in the city and stuff, well, what's the provincial issues on it? So it's too bad that's not moved further along. It would help us a lot with what we could and couldn't do, do you know what I mean? They just need to hire Ken, I think.
It can be part of the committee's work to establish, you know, where the province is with their plan and how we can ensure that the development of our plan would align with theirs, so it's one big connective map. I, I would, I mean, I don't know for sure. I would anticipate they're far enough along that we could at least determine that. But I'm guessing on that one. Ken, again, Ken probably knows more than I do on it.
Yeah, yeah, so I know it's, it's coming closer and closer. That's what I've been hearing, maybe for being finalized. But with or without that being finalized, having a member of the provincial working group on our subcommittee is key. Like, it's key. Because if you can have a member of the provincial working group that's responsible for the PEI provincial active transportation on our committee, a working group, that just, it's, it's the ultimate. And that would, that would be the goal, is to involve those stakeholders, and so they're at the table, they're making those decisions. If you look at the twenty oh seven plan, that's how, that, that just took shape because it was through consultation, right? It was through different people being involved, and like, we were so far ahead of the curve in twenty oh seven. Right? That was, that was so far ahead of the curve, right? And so if I look at so many areas where we are ahead of the curve, this is another area where we can just go bang and be there. And it's just having that official plan, so when, if, if there is an official plan, then let's say funding becomes available. It's not so much on, much like we're talking about the street names earlier. If we know that the street names have been approved, so we know that this route's been approved already by council, then when funding comes available, it's not, it's not, can we, or should we, or does it fit the plan? Well, this is the plan already. So we already have it, because there's been funding available, it's been eighty, twenty in the past. So eighty percent is paid federally and twenty is municipal, so. And without a plan, like, without a formal plan, we just can't apply.
So it sounds like we're going to send this to planning board, and then planning board will make a recommendation to either subcommittee, or whether or not they can do the work internally, which we know how busy they are with other stuff, so we'll, we'll see what comes back from there. We okay with that? Thank you councillor Trentholm. All right, we'll move to adjourn the committee of the hall meeting, and if council's okay, we can go right into special council meeting. All right. So we'll call the special council meeting to order at six twenty-five. Can I get an approval of the agenda? Councillor Adams, seconded councillor McDougall, all those in favor? Conflict of interest? Not seeing any discretionary use. Number four. Resolution oh eight seven.
The application from Hardcore Holdings, is that?
Oh eight, oh eight seven, I believe that's it. I'm just trying to find it here. Oh eight seven.
Discretionary uses.
Yeah.
Yeah? It's just sometimes the pages aren't, sometimes don't line up with the agenda, so I just want to make sure I start reading the right thing.
Page twenty-eight.
Yeah. Okay, so we will open up, I guess, with the resolution, COS twenty-five dash zero eight seven. Whereas an application was received from Hardcore Holdings Inc. to amend the official plan for PID number five four eight six one zero from industrial land use to comprehensive development area land use under the city of Summerside official plan. And whereas in accordance with section five point seven of the zoning bylaw, council shall consider the following general criteria as applicable. Conformity with all requirements of this bylaw, conformity with the official plan, suitability of the site for the proposed development, compatibility of the proposed development with surrounding land uses, including both existing and projected uses, any comments from residents or other interested persons, adequacy of existing water, sewer, road, stormwater, and electrical services, city parking and parklands for accommodating the development and any projected infrastructure requirements, impacts from the development on pedestrian or vehicular access and safety and on public safety generally, compatibility of the development with environmental scenic inherited resources, impacts on city finances and budgets, other matters as specified in this bylaw, and other matters as considered relevant. Be it resolved that official plan amendment zero one 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 to amend the city of Summerside official plan be hereby formally adopted. This bears the recommendation of the planning board meeting held on August fifth, twenty twenty-five. Official plan amendment zero one 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 to amend the city of Summerside official plan. The council of the city of Summerside, under authority vested in it by section eighteen of the Planning Act, hereby enacts as follows. The land use for PID number five four eight six one zero, as shown on schedule B of the future land use map, is designated as comprehensive development area land use, hereby excluding it from its former designation of industrial land use under the city of Summerside official plan. And that resolution, I would ask for a mover and a seconder. And then we can discuss. Moved by councillor Adams, seconded by councillor Trentholm.
All right, council of your hall heard the resolution twenty-five dash zero eight seven. Questions, comments? Before we move to a vote. Councillor McDougall?
Yes, thank you. I, first of all, I, I had a question, I believe, at the last meeting about the waste pickup at this area and how it was going to be done. And I'm not sure if we got that clarified or not. Somebody said something about a corral, but it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. I don't know if anybody talked to GFL or whoever picks it up. But also, the, there's a gentleman here, Mr. Howitt, that was here at the first meeting on, and was, and had to leave due to a medical. And so he has asked if he could address the council tonight on this, and I think we need to take a vote on it, but I would, I would ask that we allow Mr.
So let's do one thing at a time.
Yeah.
Is there any information on the corral garbage question?
Not to my knowledge. Now, it's my understanding that it's not done at this step of the process. When they come in for further approvals, including building permits, that's when they get into the heavy detail in terms of design. Right now, it's very conceptual, so it's difficult to ask a developer to tell us exactly how they plan on dealing with garbage, more generalities. I understand, just talking with Linda briefly, that there was a conversation had and that there was openness, but again, they're not down that far down the road in terms of design.
And that's un, that's unfortunate, because this is what it puts us into. We are talking about a rezoning tonight, or a discretionary use. But we just have sort of a concept. And, you know, we don't really know how many, how units are going to go there. We don't, we don't know a lot of things. And that, that's, you know, it's not just because it's this developer, it's what we're put into a lot of times, that we're in the middle of a, it's in between an industrial and residential area and commercial area, I believe, but it's, it leaves us in a bad spot. But, uh, uh, it's, it leaves us in a bad spot because we have no idea. Uh, and we have no, you know, when the, the plan comes back, we don't really see it as long as it conforms with everything. But, uh, anyway, that's my concern on, on this unit, so.
Okay, and then the second request was for Mr. Howitt to be able to ask a question, speak to council? Okay, uh, council, uh, just a show of support, I guess, for that, show of hands? Everybody okay with that? Mr. Howard? Howitt? Howitt? Take the mic. Uh, if, they'll get it for you here in a second, I think, you'll turn red here.
There's a poll card on the side.
There we go.
There we go. Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for giving us this opportunity to speak. I was here at the last meeting, but I did have to leave because of hard issues.
But just state your name, address, and then continue.
My name is Ray Howitt, I live in one seventy-four Pope Road. And these gentlemen here live in this, in the surrounding areas. And I'm here representing, uh, people on Pope Road, the residents of Pope Road and a lot of residents in the subdivision in behind me off of McDougal Drive. Uh, they all have a lot of concerns about what's the proposed, proposed development is. And again, like I said, I'm sorry, but I had to leave on medical reasons. Um, our concerns are multiple. Um, one of them is, we saw a basic drawing that was presented at that council meeting with forty units in that area, that thirteen feet wide, thirty feet long, three point one meters apart. To us, that seems extremely dense, extremely too many for that size of an area. Um, parking, where's the parking gonna be for all these people that's in there? Because today, every house has more than one car. Some of them three, some of them four. And some of them as much as seven, right? Um, I mean, I went to visit a friend last week in Cheryl Town on the Upton Road, the subdivision, or the division off there with duplexes, all on one side of the road, the other side of the road completely filled from one end of it to the other with parked cars, no place to park. People come to visit, no place to park. Um, seen a house on South Drive that was purchased here just recently. Seven or eight cars in the driveway and four or five of them on the street. So if you have forty units in there and only have three point one meters apart, or about, not even that, just, there's just not enough space there for that kind of parking. What about the garbage removal? What about the snowplow work? Uh, what about upkeep? Is it gonna be rental units? Are there gonna be purchase units? If they're rental units, is there gonna be a company or somebody that's gonna maintain and support them? Um, because we've all lived through the Pope Road issue with the Department of Highways building. Fifteen years of that. And fifteen years, we came to this committee council to get something done about it. And fifteen years with very little results. Everybody had their issues. Because once, as Bruce just said, once you create it and put it there, your own rules work against you if you try to straighten it out or fix up some issues with it. Because that's what we faced for that many years in the Pope Road issue. And what solved that was a developer decided to buy the building to develop it. Right? So I know you've got bylaws, but I know it's a difficult job passing bylaws. So that's some of our concerns. The other concerns we're having is if it's that dense a pop, you know, dense of a setup, uh, what's that do for our property values? Right? Because we're on the north side of Pope Road, which is all residential. And yes, the south side has got commercial and other, other issues. But if you look at that and you put that forty units in there, where's the traffic gonna go? Pope Road right now is one of the probably top five busiest streets in Somerside. And as soon as that east-west corridor opens up, it's gonna get worse. Because people are gonna come across Pope Road, head straight onto the east-west corridor, which is what you designed it for in the first place, right? To bypass some of the downtown core. And the traffic's only gonna get worse. So where are we gonna go? Now, if they come out to Back Street off that, they gotta come out onto Greenwood Drive or Pope Road, that's the only two ways out. If they come into Greenwood, Greenwood's a very busy street as well. It's a feeder street onto Pope Road. And there's lots of times I have seen traffic packed up, almost past McDougal Drive to South Drive, waiting to take it off of Pope Road onto South Drive. So if you add another, let's say eighty cars in there, plus visitors, where, where's that gonna go? So we have a lot of those concerns. We're also very concerned about the fact that, once it's there, who's gonna maintain it, keep it looking respectable? And don't become another government garage issue? Because that, you, uh, we've been here, I myself have been here every three times a year, talking to the, to mayor and people for the last twelve years about that government garage issue. And even today, that government garage issue is still a, a, a eyesore. There's car parks, wrecked cars, a boat sitting there, all kinds of stuff in that place. And today, the gentleman who owns this property we're talking about, not only has he piled seaweed in there, today he was dumping garbage in there. Dumping trees, dumping old lumber. And nobody seems to be able to do anything about it. Right? Because your rules say it's commercial. They have certain rights to do certain things. So our major concern is the ones I've just listed. And if something was in there and it's not gonna work well, how do we fix it? So plan your ducks carefully and make sure whatever you put in there is something that's gonna be suitable and also something that's not gonna become something that's an eyesore or something that's a problem. You get forty units in that small of an area? You know, I know it's still, the housing is an issue. But, you know, you've got close to eight hundred new apartments that are coming online in the, probably the next three to six months. You're gonna build, I heard a thousand units out in the east-west corridor? Right? So right now, there's some of the apartment buildings that are currently built that are not full because people can't afford them, right, partially? So now they're putting the rents on them at fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars a month, including electricity and internet, to get people in them. So are we gonna have a glut of apartment buildings here before long? It's starting to show signs of that already. Because everybody's building apartments. And the house next door to me was a single dwelling, it's now rented. And at any given time, there can be up to, up to eight cars in that driveway. Because, I'm not saying this to be negative in any way, shape or form, I'm not criticizing anybody, but they're mostly East Indians. And they come from a country where they live with fifteen or twenty people in house. So to them, that's quite normal. So they go in there and there's, and it's the same situation in that south and South Drive. So then there's ten cars in the driveway, sometimes fifteen, there's people visiting. So those are our concerns and I wanted to speak those to you. I'm here in behalf of these guys and the other citizens in the area. And I wanted to tell you that last week, but I'm sorry, I had to leave because of hard issues. So anyway, that's our story, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Howitt. I'm glad you're here with us this week after some hard issues, so.
So am I.
Yeah, great. Uh, I, I do wanna say, I do think some of the questions you might have asked have been maybe answered and through the process. So maybe, is Council McDougal your counselor? Justin, I'm, I'm sure Justin will provide you with some of the rationale to some of the things you would ask. Because I know some of them, when you were asking, I, I could remember hearing certain pieces of that, so. Um, I know that information can be tracked again, but thank you.
I tried to get hold of Justin, but I couldn't get hold of him, so I went to Bruce.
Yep, no, that's, you can come to any of us, we're all pretty good. Okay? Um, so, any other questions? Council Adams, yes?
Just one question, but the process, so, um, it comes later, the developer comes later to staff with how this is going to be laid out? Does it come back to us?
So we're, we're approving the discretionary use. Somebody correct me if I'm totally wrong. But we're approving for the overall use of that piece of land, no different than when we rezone whatever property, R four, R three. There, there's certain things that fall in there and then that developer's gonna come back to city staff with their plan. And as long as it meets our, uh, rules and regulations for that piece of land, then council will, or staff will give the go-ahead, no different than any other, uh, development that comes forward. We don't pick the color of the siding or the shape of the place, we, we set the rules in place. Any other questions, Council Adams? No? Council McDougal?
My question that just came up out of, out of the presentation from Mr. Howitt is, will the developer have a chance to hear those comments of what the concerns are from the residents in the area? And some of the questions that they have, uh, tonight? Will that be repeated back to the developer so he knows what the concerns are? So that there could be thought put into some of that?
So, again, hell, but, so I would say yes, in some way, shape or form, but that's not, there, there's a process set out that we sort of deep, went away from that process tonight, right? By allowing Mr. Howitt to speak. And, and that's the reason it's set out the way it is now. Um, whether or not, we're not, we're talking about whether or not it's a good use of that land for this discretionary use. And, and all the other stuff will fall into place as the process goes along. It's either, yes, it's a good use of land or no, it's not. And then the process will.
Can we add one more thing? Uh, it all depends on who the developer is and what their attitudes and what they're like to deal with. I mean, the gentleman had, he had been a grad student for years, promised all kinds of things he was gonna do, never did any of it, never. Because he didn't care, didn't give damn. So, and you guys were powerless to make him do anything because of the rules and regulations. And it's trying to be difficult, but the gentleman who currently owns that building put seaweed there when he wasn't supposed to and it's still there. And there's no way you guys can make him remove it. And today, he's doing the same thing. So what's gonna stop him from saying, I'm gonna do this, this, this and this? And everybody's hunky and then he doesn't do it. Because once it's done, you can't undo it. That's the problem. And even with your bylaws, you're running issues with it. Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. I, I, I do think in fairness to everybody involved, I think we need to know that that land is currently industrial land, right? So I, I, I do think, and if, if, if it's not correct, then our staff better be on it. But I do think what he's doing must fall under the current guidelines, to your point, like, under our current rules, so. And if that's the case, it, we, we set the guidelines.
He's allowed to turn into a dump yard because it's industrial?
I, I don't know, I'm saying it, that, that is what we would have to check with our staff, but staff will be. Staff can take that into consideration. Counselor Cameron?
Thank you. Um, just kind of a general question, with discretionary use, um, applications, are we allowed to implement restrictions on those applications?
Conditions can sometimes be included. Uh, they can't always be enforced depending on what those conditions are and it's based on rules within the Planning Act.
Okay. Not that I have any conditions off the top of my head to put out there. Um, but I just think that if there are concerns that are circulating, whether that comes from residents or from counselors, it might be a very good time to think of possible conditions that you'd like to attach to this rezoning. Um, that would be a good way to not end up in a situation like we were just discussing with Mr. Howitt, um, that our hands get tied, whether or not the conditions, like you said, follow into the Planning Act or not. Um, then, you know, it's a, it's a way to get kind of everyone into a good, happy spot, if that's what we're looking to do. Uh, but like I said, I have nothing off the top of my head, just wanted to put that out there as a potential idea if anyone had anything they wanted to put out there.
Thank you.
We've had that issue with the government grid, where there was conditions and requests put under the government, but you couldn't enforce it. And that's the problem. If you can't enforce the condition, the condition issue.
I, I need to, just two things. You need to come to the mic to speak and you, and second thing, you already had your opportunity to speak. So if you have something to speak, come say it and then, but just to, we, we need to proceed accordingly. No, it's okay, thank, it's, yeah, I know.
We've lived through this with the Department of Highways thing, it's a really sore spot for us. Because yes, you got the rules, but you can't enforce them.
And, and I, I guess we'll close on this. I don't disagree with you, the Department of Highways thing was an absolute disgrace as was the, uh, pool and other places in our city that I think we've been trying to really address quicker than in the past. So I, I don't disagree with you and thank you. Counselor Duron, go ahead.
Okay, oh, thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor. Uh, I mean, it's only fair, I guess, that I speak, I got at least two residents here, probably four. Um, so, uh, I do have, uh, a couple, few concerns, um, with this proposal as is. Um, I think technically it, it likely does meet some of the, well, it does according to the report, some of the general criteria that we, we got, we have to look at. But, um, one, I find it difficult, I think, to see the appeal of living in that particular area. Um, just as, as a, you know, a dense residential strip smackdown in the middle of a, two industrial lots. Um, but even more so, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about the practical issues that, that have been raised this evening and, and prior to this evening, uh, like whether there'll be adequate parking, um, and how the waste collection will be managed. Um, I know those details might be up to the developer. Um, but I think they still factor into whether this is an appropriate use of the land, so. I'll leave it at that.
Council McDougal?
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to, uh, let Mr. Howitt know that, that most of these concerns that were brought up were brought up at the last meeting. And, uh, I just, I'm just, I'm not, uh, I'm not comfortable with this, uh, rezoning this area. Uh, I know the.
Pardon?
Yeah, discretionary, yeah. Anyway, I, I, I know the family, I know the developer and, and feel bad about this, but I think this is in the wrong spot. I, this could be a great concept, but I think that concept needs to be somewheres else, not jammed in between a couple of, uh, and, uh, light industrial lots, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McDougal. Any other counselors with any comments, questions, statements? Not seeing any. So we'll go to resolution twenty-five dash zero eight seven. It was moved by who?
Council Adams.
Councilor Adams and seconded by Counselor?
Trentholm.
Trentholm. Counsel, you've all heard the resolution. All those in favor? Aye? Those opposed? Do I have six to one? That resolution was defeated. With that resolution being defeated, is there a secondary one to that? So the rest can come off? We're down to eight now, resolution COS, COS twenty-five dash nine zero, two thirty-two Simmons Ave. Counselor Duron?
Okay, thank you again, uh, Deputy Mayor Snow. Uh, resolution COS twenty-five dash zero nine zero, whereas an application was received from PCHF Investments, Inc. to amend the official plan for PID number one one six nine four six five and PID number seven one three four zero from agricultural land use to comprehensive development area land use under the City of Somerside official plan. And whereas in accordance with section five point seven of the zoning bylaw, council shall consider the following general criteria as applicable. Conformity with all requirements of this bylaw, conformity with the official plan, suitability of the site for the proposed development, compatibility of the proposed development with surrounding land uses, including both existing and projected uses, any comments from residents or other interested persons, adequacy of existing water, sewer, road, stormwater and electrical services, city parking and parklands for accommodating the development and any projected infrastructure requirements, impacts from the development on pedestrian or vehicular access and safety and on public safety generally, compatibility of the development with environmental scenic and heritage resources, impacts on city finances and budgets, other matters as specified in this bylaw, other matters as considered relevant. Be it resolved that official plan amendment zero one nine nine to amend the City of Somerside official plan be hereby formally adopted. This bears the recommendation of the Planning Board meeting held on August fifth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, official plan amendment zero one nine nine to amend the City of Somerside official plan. The council of the City of Somerside, under authority vested in it by section eighteen of the Planning Act, hereby enacts as follows. The land use for PID number one one six nine four six five and PID number seven one three four zero, as shown on schedule B of the future land use map, is designated as comprehensive development area land use, hereby excluding it from its former designation of agricultural land use under the City of Somerside official plan. Uh, that resolution moved by myself and I would ask for a seconder from council, Counselor Cameron.
All right, council, you all heard the resolution, any questions? Any questions, comments before we go to a vote? Not seeing any. Resolution COS 25-09 moved by Counselor Duron and seconded by Counselor Cameron. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Not hearing none? Pass unanimously. Next resolution?
Resolution COS 25091. Whereas an application was received from PCHF Investments, Inc. for a zoning amendment for a portion of PID number 1169465 and PID number 71340 from agricultural A-zone to comprehensive development area CDA-zone under the City of Summerside zoning bylaw. And whereas zoning bylaw amendment 0200, a bylaw to amend the City of Summerside zoning bylaw was read and declared as read a first time at the council meeting held on July 21st, 2025. And whereas in accordance with Section 5.7 of the zoning bylaw, council shall consider the following general criteria as applicable. Conformity with all requirements of this bylaw. Conformity with the official plan. Suitability of the site for the proposed development. Compatibility of the proposed development with surrounding land uses, including both existing and projected uses. Any comments from residents or other interested persons? Adequacy of existing water, sewer, road, stormwater, and electrical services. City parking and parklands for accommodating the development and any projected infrastructure requirements. Impacts from the development on pedestrian or vehicular access and safety and on public safety generally. Compatibility of the development with environmental, scenic, and heritage resources. Impacts on city finances and budgets. Other matters as specified in this bylaw and other matters as considered relevant. Be it resolved that zoning amendment 0200, a bylaw to amend the City of Summerside zoning bylaw, be hereby declared as read a second time. This bears the recommendation of the Planning Board meeting held on August 5th, 2025.
Thank you, Counselor Duron.
And that was moved by myself, and I would ask for a seconder for council. Counsel McDougal.
All right, members of council, you all heard Resolution COS 25-091, moved by Counselor Justin Duron and seconded by Counselor Bruce McDougal. Any questions, comments before we vote? Not hearing or seeing any? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Next resolution, Counselor Duron?
Resolution COS 25-092. Whereas an application was received from PCHF Investments, Inc. for a zoning amendment for PID number 1169465 and PID number 71340 from agricultural A-zone to comprehensive development area CDA-zone under the City of Summerside zoning bylaw. And whereas zoning bylaw amendment 0200, a bylaw to amend the City of Summerside zoning bylaw was read and declared as read at two separate meetings of council held on different days. Be it resolved that zoning bylaw amendment 0200, a bylaw to amend the City of Summerside zoning bylaw be hereby formally adopted. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor McCollman.
Yourself and Counselor McCollman. All right, counsel, you all heard Resolution COS 25-092, moved by Counselor Justin Duron and seconded by Counselor McCollman. Any questions, comments before we vote? Not hearing any? All those indicate, in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, by nay? Resolution COS 093, Counselor Duron?
Resolution COS 25093. Whereas an application was received from Jordan Buchanan to Subdivide 149 Harvard Street, PID number 316505, into two lots, creating Lot 251 and 252. And whereas Section 17.5 of the City of Summerside zoning bylaw states a lot depth of 30 meters or 98.4 feet is required for a single detached dwelling in the R3 zone. And whereas the applicant is requesting a variance of 12% to the lot depth for Lot 252. And whereas Section 7.2 of the zoning bylaw allows for a variance to be granted after council has considered the following tests. A, that the hardship is due to unique physical conditions of the lot or property, including small lot size, irregular lot shape, existing building location on the property, or exceptional topographical conditions which make it impractical to develop in strict conformity with bylaw standards. Exceptional topographical conditions may include, but are not limited to, trees, slope of the land, et cetera. B, that the proposed variance meets the general intent of the official plan. C, that the proposed variance meets the general intent of the zone. And D, that the proposed variance would not impact negatively on adjacent properties or on the essential character of the surrounding neighborhood, including taking into consideration any comments from neighbors. Be it resolved that council grant a lot depth variance of 12% for the proposed Lot 252, this application bears the recommendation of the Planning Board meeting of September 2nd, 2025. And I would invite a counselor to move and second the resolution. Moved by Counselor Cameron and seconded by Counselor Morrison.
All right, counsel, you all heard Resolution COS 25-093, moved by Counselor Cameron and seconded by Counselor Morrison. Any questions, comments before the vote? Not seeing any? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Contrary, nay? Pass unanimously. All right, that includes all the resolutions. We do have an in-camera closed-door meeting here.